Uh, Strawberry Fields' mission is to empower individuals and enrich lives. We do this through a comprehensive set of services tailored for those with development delays, intellectual disabilities, and mental health challenges. And we also would be remiss if we didn't take a moment to thank the county for our strong partnership. Cindy told me before I came today, because she couldn't, that you have been our longest and strongest supporter in our 51 years of service to this community. And I, I think it's safe to say, we couldn't do what we do without your partnership and the great partners we have in the Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities Office. One of the things we are required to do when we are providing services for those individuals in an intellectual disability residential program is to provide transportation. And as you can imagine, with individuals who have intellectual disabilities, you may have a range of physical capabilities as well and need for what we would call very specialized wheelchairs. So you may have a tilting wheelchair. You may even have someone who has a long motorized wheelchair, which means you have to have a fully accessible van. For those of you who don't know, that means you have to have a wheelchair lift. You have to reinforce the bottom of a van quite heavily to hold even just the weight of the lift itself plus the wheelchair. And the reason I share that is just to give you a sense. It costs about $25,000 just to add the components that allow you to put the lift on top of the cost of the van. And we've had a great van. It has served us well. But like everything, it's got wear and tear. It is aged. We've kept it going. But now we're looking to replenish that resource and bring it up to speed for our current needs, which we do have an individual who has a tilt wheelchair, so they can only ride in this type of van, in this type of handicap accessible van. And as good stewards, as a nonprofit, we always want to find ways that we can invest and partner and seek grants that will allow us to best fulfill our mission and to serve our shared community. So that is what we're requesting, and we're very thankful for this opportunity to partner with the county for this, this potential grant opportunity.
Well, thanks for the explanation, Janine. Obviously, a specialized van that's going to transport people who have, if you're in a tilt wheelchair, you pretty much have no physical mobility. And obviously, you start talking about carting around somebody my size, you definitely want to reinforce that van. But I'll pass it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, this sounds like an important project to, you know, really make, help you with doing what is part of your mission, so.
Meeting the needs, making sure everyone can get where they need, when they need.
Yes.
Sounds like, sounds like a great, uh, great opportunity for us to help you, and we'll see what we can do about being successful.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate the 51 years of partnership. We've been around for 223, but I don't know how many of our partners have been around outside of municipalities for that length of time.
It's a while.
It's a long time.
Half a century.
Yes, wonderful. All right, unless there's anything else, I think we could take a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 23 of 2023.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution Number 23 of 2023, uh, which is a request for an $83,390 grant, uh, from the Commonwealth Finance Authority, uh, for a local share account statewide grant. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, oppose, nay, motion carries. Any questions from the press on this one? No? All right, great. Well, thanks for coming, Janine. Appreciate it. Now we'll move on to amending some resolutions, and Natalie's going to cover that. Looks like we have three.
Good morning. So as we have been talking about the local share grants for the last month in front of the Board of Commissioners, uh, we are in our final stages of applying for those grants. They are due this Thursday. And as always, when you actually do the forms and the procedures, um, they somewhat surprise you with what they need on their resolutions. And what we found was when we completed this resolution, as we've had many others before, we always list our chairperson as the official to sign off. Uh, in the local share case, they actually needed two individuals listed on the resolution, not just one. Um, and so we need to go back and just simply list two, uh, individuals on there. So our, uh, chairperson, Mark, will be on there, and then John Frannick Jr., as our county administrator, will be our second, um, signatory for, um, any paperwork that comes through if we are successful with these grants. Um, so really, the resolution is just because we needed one more official's name on it. Um, and so as a reminder, these are for the Sage at Tallyrand Park, the Center County, uh, Public Safety Training Center, and for Kepa Pool applications. We did already correct Strawberry Fields' resolution that you were just signing today.
Great. Well, all three of those are great projects. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion, Commissioner Dershow? All right, just cleaning up paperwork on the, uh, three prior, uh, grant applications. And we'll take a motion then.
In that case, I will move to adopt Resolutions 24, 25, and 26 of 2023.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolutions 24, 25, and 26. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, oppose, nay, motion carries. All right, thanks. Thanks, Natalie. Now we're moving on to, uh, contracts. I think we've got Deb here, um, from the Coroner's Office to talk about a grant renewal.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here to just, uh, bring forth the actual transition from the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Our grant that we had done multiple years prior to this year, um, the grant monies have been used for interdepartmental coroner's office, specifically upgrades for the field, uh, work we do and, um, things like the furniture, the laptops, the, um, iPads that we currently use in the field for investigations. This year, the Department of Health has changed the name from, um, PDMP, which is, uh, Prescription Drug Program Monitor, Monitoring, to, um, the ODSMP, one more letter, Office of Drug Surveillance and Misuse Prevention. So they're working forward to giving a generalized name to the grant itself. My, um, responsibility in this grant is, in our office, we do, um, reports, which give statistics to the Department of Health, so they can follow trends, um, times, ages, uh, locations, things of that nature, where the drug deaths are occurring. So we submit this information to the Department of Health, and it helps them with their research and their prevention programs and plans. So, uh, with that being said, I would like to ask that we sign the contract to move forward with the Department of Health in the Drug Surveillance and Misuse Prevention Program.
Thanks for the explanation, Deb. And we're happy to fill out a little extra paperwork to receive, uh, 10 grand from the state. And knock on wood, we're actually having a pretty low number of overdose deaths this year, so.
At this point, the overdose, there's going to be a change.
Okay.
Things are in an uptick right now, so it's a little, it's coming to the end of the year. All right?
Thank all of the partners the county works with on, um, uh, drug misuse and drug overdose. Uh, Commissioner Dershow works with the Hope Initiative, uh, which has done great work. So, uh, any questions, Commissioner Concepcion? Commissioner Dershow?
No, just an opportunity for us to get some supplies and make your office even that much more efficient, so good opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Great, well, take a motion then.
I'll move to add the grant renewal with the Pennsylvania Department of Health to next week's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor of adding the grant renewal to the Pennsylvania Department of Health to the next week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks. And Glenn's already up there, ready to go.
Good morning. Uh, presenting today, a intergovernmental housing agreement with Blair County. Uh, they approached us about housing some, uh, excess inmates from their facility while there, some planned construction coming up. Uh, this is our standard boilerplate language, which has already been approved by our solicitor, and it's at our standard rate of $75 a day. Contract will start, uh, upon your approval and run through the end of December 2024 with a one-year automatic renewal period.
Thanks a lot, and thanks to you and your staff, and probation, and the court system, and all of the other stakeholders we work with to keep the number of, um, Center County citizens in our facility very low, uh, which leaves us this additional space to help out the sister counties. Great, any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Thanks. My only question is if there's a, when there's an opportunity for that automatic renewal, is there an opportunity to revisit the rate per day?
Yes, we plan on, uh, sometime next summer. I have it on my calendar, I don't know the exact date, uh, to meet with, um, Richard about our true cost, so we can adjust all of our contracts for 2025.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dershow?
Amber asked my, my concern, so we got that covered. Uh, but my other concern is, are all the contracts we have with, uh, our sister counties at $75 a day at this point?
Correct. Every contract we have is $75.
Okay, perfect. All right. Want to make sure we caught, got caught up?
Yep.
Great to hear that's all standardized, and I'm glad we can, uh, help, uh, Blair County out in their, in a time of need. I know the other counties have helped us in various other areas, so always appreciate that. Looks like we can take a motion then.
I'll move to add the intergovernmental housing agreement template to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor of adding the intergovernmental housing agreement template to next week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Glenn. All right, and talking about probation, here's Ryan.
I am here for a grant renewal. This is an annual grant that the Juvenile Probation Department receives. Uh, this is a two-phase approach. We have to create an implementation plan that's approved by the Juvenile, uh, Commission. Once that is approved, we then are given the amount that we are expected to receive for the, for the year. I believe this is, the amount is consistent with previous years. We are expected to receive $104,043, and this is retroactive, going back to July 1st of '23 to June 30th. And the, the, these funds are earmarked to assist with staff salaries on the Juvenile Department side.
Great, thanks, Ryan. And didn't have a chance to tell you yet, but at the Commissioners' Convention, one of our priorities for 2024 is, uh, the, uh, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania meeting its obligation to fund probation at 80% of the county's costs. I think right now we're looking at 16% to 18%. So, uh, we're making probation a priority at the, at the state level.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your help. Um, Commissioner Concepcion, any questions? Commissioner Dershow?
I just want to say thank you, Glenn, for, for being here. Uh, you, the work you do is very important. It's very, at times extremely difficult, and child placement right now is as challenging as it's ever been. Just want to say thank you for all the good work you do, and, uh, appreciate the, the time and service you provide. Thank you.
Thanks. Looks like we can take a motion then.
I'll move to add the grant agreement renewal for juvenile probation services grant to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second to add the grant agreement renewal for juvenile probation to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Ryan. Thanks. And now, uh, we've got Krista for Risk Management.
Good morning, everyone.
All right.
So, uh, I'm here today, today to discuss a cleaning contract that we have, um, with our Phillipsburg District Justice Office. Originally, it was written, uh, with McGarvey's Janitorial Services through the end of December 2024. Um, but I'm here today to ask your approval to terminate that contract early, um, as of the end of December 2023. Um, we've just decided to go with a different concept of cleaning, and, uh, we've talked to McGarvey's, and they're aware of this, and they agree. Um, so it's, um, it's a, an okay situation, and we just wanted to, um, ask your approval to make that official and to send a letter of termination.
Great, well, thanks for the info. Commissioner Concepcion, anything?
So then that goes out to, uh, out seeking other proposals then?
Yes, so you will see me in the very near future with a new contract. Yes.
Commissioner Dershow, anything?
Then I will move to approve contract termination with McGarvey's Janitorial Service.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the contract termination with McGarvey's Janitorial Service. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Krista. And, uh, now hopefully the technology gods will continue to smile on us, and, uh, Chris is coming up, uh, for a PowerPoint presentation on a memorandum of understanding for final land development plan.
We have complete faith in you.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Appreciate that.
Great.
Thank you, good morning. Uh, have a memorandum of understanding being presented today, but before I go into what the MOU, memorandum of understanding is for, just a brief reminder that the MOU that's being presented today is a three-party agreement between the developer, township, and the county, whereby the developer will agree to reimburse, in this case, Benner Township and their engineer for the associated cost with the township's engineering, uh, reviewing, processing, inspecting, and approving the engineering details of this plan. And the plan that's being, uh, going to be reviewed by the Center County Planning Commission is for Edder's HVAC Office and Storage Building. It's located in Benner Township in the Airport Park subdivision. Uh, this is the State College Regional Airport.
Nice touch.
Oh, thank you, yes, I had to update that. Uh, with Fox Hill Road and High Tech Road, and you come on High Tech Road, and there's another road called Crosswings Drive, and this is the site that's being developed. It's, I think, about a five to seven acre tract of land, and the plan shows a 5,760 square foot office and storage building for Edder's HVAC, along with a deck and an access drive that consists of both paved and gravel portions. And that's the plan that's being presented, along with the corresponding MOU.
Perfect. Do you have to say a little more development of an industrial type in the county? Commissioner Concepcion, question?
Just going back to the map, it looks like there's going to be residential, that there's residential neighborhoods planned for those areas then.
Uh, this, Harvest Meadows, and this is all Harvest Meadows subdivision, uh, not all of these purple lines have been approved yet. Those are the, part of the, what's called the preliminary plan for Harvest Meadows that tax assessment will, uh, sort of earmark, so when the final plans come in, those have already been, uh, added to the books. They'll, they'll go from a temporary purple color to what you see as sort of a yellow line once the deeds are transferred.
We've had other conversations about the development in that, in that area before, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dershow?
I'm good.
All right, sounds great. Looks like we can take a motion. Actually, no, we're doing the, uh, we're heading everything to the consent, consent agenda later, so, uh, is any questions from the press for Chris on this project?
Chris, probably last time we asked a question this year, anything new on the Belt Palm Warehouse Project?
No, there's lots of new gear.
Okay. Thank you. Still a month, Gary. Yeah, I know. I know.
Anything for Grant? No? All right, well, thanks, Chris. Um, thanks for that quick presentation. Now, now we'll have, uh, Ray come up on a grant agreement for the mosquito-borne disease control program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Um, here this morning for the renewal of the E, for the E-grant agreement, uh, between Center County and, uh, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, in the amount of $85,663 for the period of January 1st to December 31st of 2024. Uh, this, uh, program covers not only Center County, but also Clinton and Clearfield Counties. It is 100% reimbursable through the PADEP. Uh, it entails education, where our mosquito disease control, uh, staff provides, uh, information leaflets on mosquito, uh, control, and also tick control, uh, at the Grange Fair and also at the Clinton County Fair. Surveillance is a big part of this agreement, uh, for mosquitoes. It's April 1st through September 30th, or, uh, upon approval of DEP. Sometimes that season gets extended depending on, uh, weather. And also our tick surveillance is included, uh, for April 15th through August 30th. Um, this pays for, as I indicated, a mosquito disease control coordinator and also a technician. Unfortunately, our coordinator is going to be retiring, so we're going to be having a new, need for a new coordinator next year. Um, this e-signature will include authorization for the chairman to sign, and also our county administrator.
Thanks, Ray. Appreciate the description on that. Commissioner Concepcion, anything?
Important stuff to make sure we're on top of.
Commissioner Dershow?
As, as always, I think it's fantastic that we can work with Clinton and Clearfield Counties to provide those services. The other, the other thing that I would say is, uh, what kind of, I know we rely on, uh, we have a, I guess, a fleet would probably be, not be the right, we have a vehicle that, that, that provides the mitigation part of the, of, of the service. What kind of shape is the vehicle in, or what, do we have any, uh, infrastructure needs or anything, uh, that would, uh, that we need to address this year in regard to the maintenance of this program?
The, uh, status, uh, there are two vehicles dedicated to the program, along with sprayers that are maintained each year and calibrated. Uh, the vehicles, I believe, are three years old, and those were both paid through the DEP program, so, uh, those are maintained annually, and, uh, they're in proper working order as far as we're concerned, so, uh, very good working order, in fact.
So we don't, we don't have any infrastructure needs or any, any, any capital needs? Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we appreciate the Commonwealth funding this for the three different counties, and just happens to be headquartered here.
Kill all of us with those tests you can, that's.
Yes.
That's my only big question.
The big thing is monitoring for West Nile virus under this program, so, uh, I think our gentlemen do a very good job in trying to get the word out when we get positive tests in all three counties.
Wonderful. Any questions from the press on that? No? Looks like we can take a motion then.
I'll move to add the planning and community development items one and two to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that, as long as we're killing fleas, or, or ticks and, and mosquitoes. Fleas, too, for that matter.
That'll, that'll be some additional state funding. We're going to have to start lobbying, uh, really for that. Um, so we have a motion to add the planning and community development items one and two to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Ray. All right, and now we have Faith coming up for five contracts.
Good morning. All right, um, so all five items are for fiscal year '23, '24. Uh, the first is a linkage agreement. This is with Peerstar LLC, so this is just a requirement in order for our agencies to work together, make sure that we're connecting individuals with not only Peerstar, but other sorts of services in our community. Um, and there is no cost associated with this. The next four are all contract renewals. Uh, the first is with Center County Youth Services Bureau to provide mental health services, including housing support, family services, student assistance program, and CAS. The second is a contract renewal with Eagle Ridge Personal Care Home. This is to provide mental health housing support services, which includes supported living. Uh, the next is a contract renewal with St. Francis University. They provide intellectual disability services, including the National Core Indicator Survey, the QA and I and IM surveys. And the final is a contract renewal with Center County Youth Services Bureau to provide drug and alcohol services, which includes performance-based prevention services.
Great, well, thanks for reviewing those, Faith. Got, uh, five contracts, and it looks like it's a fair fraction of a million dollars. Appreciate the state's support on that. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
And it looks like almost all of these are renewals, except for the first one then, right?
Yeah, the, the first one's a pretty standard agreement that we have with a lot of different agencies. Yeah.
I will move that we add the NHIDEI DNA items one through five to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second to add the, uh, five items for mental health, intellectual disability, early intervention, drug, and alcohol to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Faith. All right, and now another, uh, planning presentation, uh, this one from Liz. Um, and this one is for, um, the, uh, potential projects for the 2024 Liquid Fuels Program and Fee for Local Use allocations. Uh, this is a lot of work in planning, 35 municipalities, multiple projects. I, Liz will give us a total, but it's normally over a million dollars a request, and nowhere near a million dollars worth of, uh, of funding.
We're all two for two this morning.
Are we?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, we love technology when it works. Okay, all right, thank you. So this morning, um, I'm going to be providing staff recommendations of the municipal, uh, transportation projects that should be funded in the 2024 round for both the Liquid Fuels and the Fee for Local Use programs. Um, the pictures on the screen of those road conditions are actual photos that were submitted in the applications for the 2024 round, so that gives you, you a sense of what the conditions are and what the, you know, the, the meaning behind these requests. Um, all of our funding here at Center County is primarily pooled from three sources. It's the Liquid Fuels, the Fee for Local Use, and the Act 13 at-Risk Bridge Funding. Um, we consider all of those different mechanisms when these municipal requests come in. Um, all of these funding programs, I'm not going to go into great detail, but they are all, um, enabled through legislation at the state. So County Liquid Fuels comes from your gas tax. Uh, County Fee for Local Use Program is made, uh, available through the $5 registration fee on all non-exempt vehicles, and the Act 13, um, at-risk bridge program was established through the unconventional gas well drilling through the Marcellus Legacy Fund. We did a synopsis, um, in this graph of the Liquid Fuels awards from the last seven years. Each of the different colors in that graph represent a def, different eligible activity that falls under Liquid Fuels. Um, you'll see the majority of them are color-coded in that light green, which means they are road maintenance projects. Um, and as you saw, as the photos on the first slide, uh, that is the primary, um, expense that municipalities request. When we get the applications in, um, we have an evaluation and selection process. Uh, most of these guidelines, though, do come from PennDOT. Uh, we always consider construction, maintenance, and repair of municipal-owned roads and bridges. Um, some equipment expenses are allowed, and the projects are always evaluated on need, safety, contribution by the municipality, and the last year that the county allocated funds to the municipality. Um, again, the little pictures you see are real projects that were, um, requested for So an overall look at the 2024 Liquid Fuels Program and Fee for Local Use Program, um, as follows with the application summary, uh, 14 applications were received, all were eligible. Um, as always, the allocations requested far outweigh, uh, what is available. Um, it was just over $1 million was requested from the municipalities. Uh, the total project costs, though, were about $2.35 million, so that gets you a sense of what the request was for the municipalities versus what they can contribute. The total county Liquid Fuels funding budgeted for 2024 is $170,000. We just received the December allocation, which was $88,000, but this figure looks ahead as to what is forecasted to come in, in that June and December cycle of 2024. When we get into the Fee for Local Use funding, we are also looking to add in the funds that will be needed to, um, take out for the bridge replacement projects. So that is, that explains why that figure is a little bit higher than it had been in the past years. But it comes out to $663,058.66. Um, again, this is just a quick graph that kind of gives a summary of what municipalities have requested. Um, we had three larger requests in this cycle, but most of them were kind of in that moderate range of what we felt were fundable. An overall look at what was funded in 2023 versus what was requested in 2024, um, the red squares were the 2023 Liquid Fuels Awards, and the yellow squares were the 2023 Fee for Local Use Awards. We just superimposed the, the little blue dots with the dollar symbols in them to give you a sense of what was awarded last year versus what is being requested this year, countywide.
All throughout the county, most of the municipalities.
It is all throughout the county. We thought about doing a map that really showed, um, the whole history of all the awards, but that would be a lot of dots on one map for this morning's presentation. May, maybe at a later date.
That'd be helpful.
At, at some point, we may venture down that road. So we will get into, um, the Liquid Fuels recommendations for 2024. Uh, of the 14 projects, we identified three that we felt were, uh, very viable for funding out of the Liquid Fuels. Uh, the first one was Howard Township. Um, they want to do resurfacing of Township Road 398, which is Bullet Run Road. Um, they had had some previous requests with this project. A total project cost $98,895. We are recommending, um, an allocation of $58,895, so we can fund them at what they requested. Houston Township, they want to do a partial paving of Railroad Street for access over the railroad crossing. Um, that was one of the pictures that was depicted earlier. Um, the total project cost being $38,670. Their request is $28,670. We feel that that can be fully funded at that requested amount. Penn Township, um, they want to do some ceiling and coating of the entire length of Smithtown Road and do some pulverizing and reconstruction of Green Grove Road. Uh, Green Grove Road is very close to the Pens Valley High School, so we thought that that would be a, a viable project, um, with any future improvements to the high school. They were asking $109,000. We can do up to $100,000. We felt that that was a viable, um, figure to provide them. We felt that that was a viable figure to provide them, that could get them on the road with that project. So the total funding for the two thousand twenty-four liquid fuels allocations, we were recommending to fund at one hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Great. Do you want to move forward with the fee-for-local?
Yes, yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, but yep, we are here. So there are three projects that we felt were viable for fee-for-local-use. Bellefonte Borough, they want to continue to do their streetscapes at Bishop and Spring Street. They asked for twenty-five thousand. We felt that that was an optimal figure that we can fund in full. Center Hall Borough, they want to continue milling and paving of some of their alleyways. It's a similar request from last year. They asked for fifteen thousand. We felt that that was viable for funding. Snowshoe Township, they are looking to do paving and shoulder repair on Gordon Road. Their ask was thirty-five thousand. We felt that that was a fundable project. So in total, from fee-for-local-use, seventy-five thousand would be what we would recommend that be funded. We also looked, again, adding in the forecasted bridge project funding that would be on the horizon, just bringing that total -- it looks like a scary number. It's just adding in the bridge funding moving forward at that seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
And please, I remember both of those bridge projects at the bottom. It's the only way in and out of those neighborhoods. No bridge, no access to housing, to kayaks, to boat launches, and several businesses.
Yeah, correct.
Commissioner Concepcion, any questions for Liz?
Yeah, it looks like you've really analyzed, like, where the greatest need is and where they -- we have not allocated in that particular township or municipality.
Yeah, I mean, we looked at, again, like, what the last award was, how impactful the project was going to be, what they can bring to the table, and then, you know, the viability of the project. And once they get it started, are they going to be able to finish it? So just in summary, this is just looking at the total allocations for funding that have been recommended out of liquid fuels. Again, the one hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five. The fee-for-local-use recommendation being seventy-five thousand. This gets you six projects out of fourteen that we feel will be impactful and viable for completion.
With over a million dollars of requests.
Yeah, and, you know, it's unfortunate that the requests are always more than what is available, but I think staff did a good job in narrowing down the selections.
Great. Thanks, Liz. Any additional questions?
So is there a -- since once we've gone through these bridge rehabilitations that need to be done, which are kind of an emergency sort of basis, then that fee-for-local-use, you'll have a larger pool freed up for these more normal kind of run-of-the-mill road projects?
That is the thinking. The next two years were in that delicate balance, though, with those bridge projects because there's always those unknowns. So we wanted to be a little bit more conservative in our selections this year, but again, I think these projects are going to be viable.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You've seen twenty of these presentations, so.
Yeah.
All good. All right, great. So the Commissioners will have a week to look over the lists, and if we're in agreement with the staff recommendation, then we would move forward with those projects. Great.
Thank you. And thank you.
I think we take a motion on that.
I will move to add the two thousand twenty-four liquid fuels and fee-for-local-use allocations to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor of adding the two thousand twenty-four liquid fuels and fee-for-local-use allocations to next week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Any questions from the press on that? No? All right. We have a medium-sized consent agenda. Any changes on that? No? Okay. Take a motion on that.
I will move to approve this week's consent agenda.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor of approving this week's consent agenda, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Move on to a check run, I believe, from Commissioner Concepcion.
Okay, so with this week's check run, I'd like to highlight, we have a few checks in here for language translation services, which really kind of demonstrates the diversity of needs in our community in regard to potentially child and youth services, interacting with families, and the courts when someone who does -- has English as a second language needs some help with translation. So that's something we're legally obligated to do, but glad to be able to provide that service to our residents here. And with that, I would move to approve the check run dated November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
We have a motion of second to approve the check run dated November twenty-second. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And now we have Doug Meyer from the Nittany Performing Arts Center Board of Directors here to talk about another local share account grant request, but this one, I believe, is coming through the State College Borough Redevelopment Authority.
That's correct. Nittany Performing Arts Center has been, is basically a collection of performing arts groups in the area that don't have a place to harass and perform. And we were founded in two thousand seventeen to start working on this problem. And in the last couple of years, we've been working with the Redevelopment Authority with the understanding that the Puistry Garage is going to be demolished in the near future. And so we are going to apply for this grant with, actually through the RDA to do this. They have approved it, and we have our final meeting tomorrow to do this. What the elements of the grant are, are to do architectural, the final architectural rendering, including the parking garage and the performing arts center and rooftop terrace, and also the area developed around this. We've received the estimates from the architect, from the business planner, and from the funding and capital campaign groups just recently. We have our final meeting with the RDA tomorrow. The grant is ninety percent done. We have a few blanks to fill in, so we'll take care of that tomorrow. And we would very much appreciate your support.
Great. Thanks, Doug. And I believe the project involves a relatively large theater and then a smaller theater space.
Yes, basically, what's missing in our community is an eight-hundred-seat theater that has fly space, big enough stage for a symphony orchestra, an orchestra pit, eight-hundred seats, dressing rooms that are adequate, something that all of these groups, the symphony, the chamber orchestra, the ballet, all of these people really need to have to do a super job. So the big theater is really the star performer, and then another two-hundred-seat theater for smaller productions and all the amenities that go with that.
Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
This will be an amazing project, one and if it's completed, for downtown State College in terms of bringing folks into the area, then they'll shop and eat at restaurants, and it seems like it'll be a great economic driver.
That's true.
Yep.
Number on the grant is?
It's still flexible. We just got the most recent estimate, so it's going to be eight hundred thousand plus.
Okay. All right. Sure. Good question, Steve. Okay. Unless there's any questions, then take a motion.
I'll move to approve the letter of support for the Nittany Performing Arts Center Board of Directors.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approval letter of support for the Nittany Performing Arts Center Board of Directors, submission of a grant for a DCD local share account. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks. Thanks, Doug. John, is there an administrators report?
Just a brief update on the Center County courthouse retaining walls that work is -- the contractors mobilizing and testing.
Let me interrupt you real quickly. Any questions from the press on the Nittany Performing Arts Center? I should have done that. We're good? Okay, sorry. Keep going then, John.
Contractors mobilizing, detours in place, and test soil nails will be performed here within a week or so.
Ooh.
So.
Let's make sure we get some pictures of that. That's going to be looking very strange as they try to drive something flexible and twenty feet long into the side of a cliff.
Yep, so they'll put in the test nails, and then they will grout them and then pull them to see if we're getting -- they have the adequate grip.
Okay. Interesting. All right. Steve, do we have a voters' registration report?
We do. They're back. This morning, we have one hundred thousand eight hundred and twenty-six, excuse me, registered voters in Center County. That's up ninety-four from the last report a few weeks ago. The Democratic registrants include forty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-one individuals. The Green Party is one hundred and forty. The Libertarian Party is six hundred and four registrants. No affiliation involves thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-two. And then there are forty thousand eight hundred and forty-eight Republican voters. And when you add all the others, you have three thousand and seventy-one total. And of that three thousand and seventy-one, this week's feature party is the Dietzist Party, D-I-E-T-Z-I-S-T, party. And the Dietzists have one registration in Center County as of this morning. So we have a feature precinct, and we now have some numbers from the November seventh election. So I'd like to recognize Unionville Borough Precinct number thirty-five, which votes at the Borough Building. And in the last election on November seventh, there were two hundred and two registered voters. Seventy-eight ballots were cast, which led to a voter turnout percentage of thirty-eight point six-one percent. And again, thank you for everybody who showed up and the folks that made the election happen and to Unionville Borough for allowing us to use their facility. So that is my report.
Great. Thanks, Steve. John, do we have any executive sessions to report or hold?
No executive sessions to report or hold.
All right. And our public meeting schedule on Thursday, we have Finance Committee at nine and a combined Board of Commissioners and Salary Board meeting at ten. And then next week, Tuesday, is the Board of Commissioners meeting at ten. Hopefully, we won't have the firewall reboot at nine fifty-six next Tuesday. We also have a Commissioners' Work Session at eleven and the Employee Benefits Trust meeting at three. Any other questions from the press?
Does the county still be needing Marcellus shale impact money?
A little bit, I think.
It's not a whole lot.
Yeah.
So the local share funding?
The Strawberry Fields in the same category as the Band Show and the other three there.
Yes.
And then like Slushy Amlets is a letter of support?
Yes. Yeah, so we, as -- it's a relatively new grant, but as Commissioners, we have the ability to bring forward grants that we feel are serving broader areas of the county, you know, like the Public Safety Training Center, which not only serves Center County but upwards of eighteen other surrounding counties. But then there are also projects like the one that we just had with the Nittany Performing Arts Center where the State College Borough Redevelopment Authority is moving that one forward. And we thought, well, that's a nice project, too, so we'll send them a letter of support.
And the priority, you were talking about the County Commissioners Association with probation funding. Could you recap that?
Sure. Many years ago, the state of Pennsylvania promised the counties that they would fund eighty percent of the costs of running the probation and youth probation in their counties. I don't know if that number was ever hit in the first place, but it dwindled over the years. I think since Steve's been a Commissioner, it's dropped from about forty percent to as low as sixteen percent. And so when the County Commissioners met last week in Hershey, we voted on, was it about fifty or so different priorities? And that was one of--
Yeah, selected a subset.
Yeah, and we selected roughly eight, which also included broadband again for the fifth straight year, rural broadband. But that was one of our top priorities, was requesting that the state of Pennsylvania put itself on a track to come back to funding close to eighty percent of the cost of running probation throughout the Commonwealth.
Can you ballpark the probation cost of the county in the name of Center County?
Oh, John, we've just been going over budgets. It's multiple millions.
We do receive a variety of grants to offset some of those expenses, so.
But unfortunately, now it's a fraction of what has been promised.
It's an interaction between CYS as well with the juvenile side of things.
Yeah. But already costs multiple millions, and you saw we were talking about a grant for something like a hundred thousand.
And if you look at the youth detention center budget for next year, it's going to be pretty pricey. The cost of doing business there has gone up considerably. So there'll be some increases for sure in the cost of doing business in probation, both adult and juvenile.
Is it just staffing at the youth center, or are there other costs that are?
The whole cost of operation across the board has been increased.
Are you looking to share that with the other counties involved?
We do. It's a five-county jointer, and that's, you know, and it's based on usage. But we've all seen over the years, you know, fluctuations in that usage, and it's just our year that we've had more utilization than normal. And I think it's going to impact us several, the next several years.
All right, thank you.
Great question, Gary. Marie, anything? No? All right. Unless there's anything else for the good of the order, I think we can take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion of second to adjourn at ten fifty. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.